The September 1st meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have an open podium opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Our council meetings are generally the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium period of time is approximately 6:35 or 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chambers. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office by noon of the meeting date with your name, your subject matter you wish to discuss, and your phone number. If you have any questions on this, and if you want to make a reservation for open podium, please contact, again, the city manager's office at 949-8412. If time ends for scheduled speakers and we still have additional time, we will open it up to people that have not been pre-scheduled. Open podium is not recorded or televised. Again, contact the city manager's office if you have any questions about open podium. We'll start off with the HRA meeting. I'd like to call the HRA meeting to order. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the meeting on April 21st, 2015?
So moved.
Second. Any corrections to those? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We were asked to adopt a resolution. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, at both the HRA and city council meeting, we're asking you to take action on the preliminary levy and budget for both the city of Eden Prairie, in this case, the HRA. And that's an action that's needed, from the HRA's perspective, to be taken by September 15th of each year, to pass a preliminary levy and budget. The city budget actually has until September 30th. We're hoping to take both actions tonight. But first of all, with the HRA levy, we have the ability to adopt a levy up to .0185% of the taxable market value in our community. And that limit for Eden Prairie, if we chose to do that, would be $1.6 million. However, for the past several years, if not a decade now or more, we've had a levy of $200,000. And that, again, is the action that we're asking you to take tonight. And the, these dollars that we fund our HRA budget with would be, are, much of it is used on our housing and our housing assistance programs that we have in our community. It could also be used for redevelopment projects as well. And as you set the levy in September, this levy could be lowered by the end of the year. So action will need to be taken by the HRA by the end of the year, but it could not be raised at any future date. So again, the proposed resolution is to adopt the tax levy of $200,000 and a budget of $200,000 for 2016.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I have no problems with doing it at the $200,000 level, but if it's true, this hasn't been raised for 10 or 12 years. Next year, I would like to look, have us look into raising it, you know, maybe $25,000 or what it would be appropriate for what it would have been 10 years ago or something. At some point, things need to go up proportionally. I don't want a huge, big change, but I think that it's maybe been long enough with no change.
Councilmember Nelson, we can certainly discuss that throughout the next budget process and provide, you know, more detail on, on the programming and the other revenue sources and expenditures within the HRA as well. In fact, at, in October, at our next workshop, we're going to be examining and looking at all the other funds outside of the general fund as well. So we might have some information as soon as October.
All right. Well, it can't go up from this, this year, but, but maybe next year. I, I don't, I'm not asking for a big, huge increase either, but $25,000 might be something in the range, prices go up for these programs.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution to approve the proposed 2006 property tax levy to be $200,000 and accept the proposed 2016 budget of $200,000.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn the housing and redevelopment authority?
Move to adjourn the HRA.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have two nice donations that have come into the city, pool-related donations. Mr. Lotthammer.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Councilmembers, Team Fox Jets has pledged to raise funds for the aquatics expansion project. They've been working on that for quite some time now in a variety of ways. One, people contributed directly to them for their names being recognized on the tile mural that's already in place at the aquatic center, as well as naming rights agreements that they would enter into for naming of pools or rooms at the aquatic center. So this is the first of some installments that will be coming to us over the next year or so from Team Fox Jets. It is $100,000. There are other contributions that you'll see tonight, as well as when we talked about the one in the past with Elsmore Speedo that are in addition to what this $100,000 is. So when you're thinking about how is the fundraising effort going for the Fox Jets, this is one indication, but there are others, and we feel it's going well and more to go. But there are also more amenities that will be coming online that they'll have the opportunity to sell naming rights for, too, like the new zero-depth entry and also the water slide are a couple of major dollar items that could and still can be sold to add to the total from the Fox Jets. So tonight, this would be the first installment of $100,000 towards the aquatic center fundraising effort.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'd move to, let me make sure I remember it right, move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation from Team Fox Jet toward the aquatics expansion project.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, Mr. Lotthammer.
Yes, Your Honor, this item is obviously with more of a heavier heart from the community, and it's something that the community has certainly rallied around, says, you know, Sidney Gallagher was a young lady who tragically passed away not long ago. She was active on the diving team especially and also within our community. And the swim community and residents of Eden Prairie have come together and raised $75,000 for the naming rights of the second pool, the one with the diving boards, to be named the Sidney Gallagher Memorial Pool. And, you know, unfortunately, this does happen from time to time, and like the Ryan Schuman Memorial Rink, it's been a way for the community to express that sorrow and the willingness to have the legacy and memory live on. And so tonight, this really is two actions, one to accept the gift, and then the second part of the action is to enter into the naming rights agreement.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Sure. I move to adopt the resolution accepting a donation of $75,000 on behalf of Sidney Gallagher Memorial Pool fundraising effort and enter into a naming rights agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, thank you to community members that supported Team Fox Jet's fundraising efforts, and also thank you to the friends of Sidney Gallagher who have made all of this possible, under tragic circumstances, though. Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Any items to add or delete? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held on August 18th, 2015?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council meeting held that same date?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Consent calendar. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second. Any items to pull for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to our first public hearing, which is Town Place Suites. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have before us a planned unit development concept review with waivers on 1.87 acres and a zoning district amendment within the commercial regional service district, and a site plan review at 11588 Leona Road. This is a location of the Town Place Suites. The proposed project is a 300-square-foot building expansion at this location to add a breakfast room, to provide continental breakfast for the guests. The materials proposed for the addition exceed the city code requirements, and the proponent is adding bicycle parking to the site. The code requires a base area ratio of up to .20, and the building addition increases that to .21. So that is the one waiver before you tonight. The, again, the expansion is not adding guest rooms, so there are no additional parking requirements. The planning commission voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the project at their August 10th meeting, and tonight, the project proponent is here to provide a brief overview, and staff and the proponent can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm John Ferrier with CSM Corporation, representing the applicant on this project. The project is a very small addition to our existing Town Place Suites hotel. Every, every so often, the hotels, they have PIPs, which are property improvement plans, which are required to keep the franchise flag. And one of those such things is the requirement to add a breakfast area at our Town Place Suites. So it's a very small addition. It's, we still have enough parking on-site, and we believe it, it fits in with the building context very well. So if you have any other questions, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for John? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's a nice addition. It actually improves the look, I think, of the building.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Is there a motion? Oh, pardon me, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to address the council on Town Place Suites? Okay. Motion?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 1.87 acres and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning district review with the, within the commercial regional service zoning district on 1.87 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Our second public hearing is related to a sign ordinance. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You may recall at the, just a few hours, not even an hour ago, you received a comprehensive review of what may need to be changes to our sign code at a future date that are much more expansive than what you have tonight. Tonight, we have a few housekeeping items in our sign code, and at a future date, as we were discussing in workshop, we are going to need to come back with more revisions to our sign regulations so that we are not in conflict with the recent Supreme Court decision, U.S. Supreme Court decision related to sign regulations. So tonight, the minor changes in the code, there are four, and I'll go over them very quickly. The first is to include a definition of an entry monument sign. That is something, as you know, is a capital project and a kind of sense of community goal initiative that we have in Eden Prairie, and as that project moves forward, we feel that we need a definition of a monument sign. The second item is to have a maximum square footage of 300 square feet per tenant for wall signs within the commercial zoning district. Currently, there is no maximum for multi-tenant buildings, and there is a maximum for single-tenant buildings. Third, we revised our language to reference the term rentable space instead of the current language of accessory use, and this will provide better clarification in our industrial and office zoning districts. And then finally, we are proposing to increase the freestanding sign width from 18 inches to 30 inches to allow more flexibility for decorative freestanding signs that incorporate stone and brick. So those are the four items. You can see the changes within the code, and we can certainly answer any questions that you may have. This would come back for a second reading at a future council meeting as well.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions. This last one on freestanding signs, proposing an increase in width from 18 to 30 inches so that there can be brick or stone incorporated into the sign, and I assume that means like pillars on the side with the sign in between?
Your Honor, basically, we're talking about a two-sided sign, and it's more what I would call the depth of the sign than the width of the sign face that we're talking about. So what the code is trying to prevent is that sometimes they'll actually open them up in kind of a V shape.
Oh, okay.
And if it gets too wide, it's really a bigger viewable sign, or it's more like two signs that are both, you know, able to be seen.
Right.
So we limit that kind of depth of the sign on those two-face signs.
Got it.
But 18 inches is prohibiting people from facing them with brick and stone and the like.
Okay. And then the other question is related to the maximum square footage increasing to 300 square feet per tenant. That's the size of this breakfast room addition that Town Place Suites is putting in, and that's just for one of the tenants that's within a multi-tenant building, correct? What are the ramifications of this? Give me an example of some worst-case scenario that we might have as a result of this, because it seems like that's a lot of signage.
Right. It is currently creating a maximum that doesn't exist now. So currently, each individual tenant can have signage based on the area of their kind of storefront, if you will, or the size of the, the front of that leasable portion of the office or industrial building. So it is actually creating a maximum that doesn't currently exist if the space is bigger, but it is proportional to the size of the building already. It's just that if you have a very large building, we don't want, or a very large tenant space, we don't ever want to see a size, a sign bigger than 300 square feet, which is the current maximum for a single-tenant building.
Okay.
So we're really aligning it.
Yeah.
Right now, a single tenant can have 300 square feet. Now, we're saying the total cannot be more than 300 square feet.
No, each individual tenant cannot be more than 300 square feet. Even if they have a very large space, because that would be like a single-tenant building than a very large space.
The mayor's concern is legit, because you could get a whole lot of.
Bigger signs.
Yeah. In a strip mall situation where you've got relatively small things, you, this would be very, very busy. I, I almost think it's too much.
Seems like a lot.
I, what I read it as 300 total, you know, where you could have lots, that, that's what I read it as, too. That's, you know, you could even make it 400 total, but there's a lot of strip malls with a lot of tenants that this would allow them to go something almost as big as their sales unit.
Yeah.
On top of it. Or is there a height restriction?
Your Honor and councilmembers, I don't think I'm explaining myself very well. There is a maximum of 15% of the wall area of that wall where the tenant is located. However, if they happen to have a very large tenant space, it's, it's potentially feasible that that 15% could get them over the 300-square-foot max. So that's what we're trying to address. You may still think in multi-tenant buildings, they shouldn't be able to have a sign as large as a single-tenant building, but we're not, we're creating a restriction here that doesn't currently exist. We're not allowing more signage.
But the 15% tops this, then?
In smaller spaces, the 15% would come into play much sooner than the 300 square feet.
Okay. But it can't, it can't be the other way around, 300 or 15%. It's 15% or 300.
Or a maximum.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Because that would make a big difference, depending on which way you said it.
Mr. Amaya, related to that, this 300 square feet per tenant, I thought we, you said something about we didn't previously have a maximum, but it seems to me, I can remember years back, like when Home Depot came in, talking about their signage, and how many feet, square feet this sign was versus how much they had in this sign, and adding it all up to make a certain size. So I thought we had a maximum.
There is a maximum for the single-tenant buildings, that the wall sign would be no more than 300 square feet.
Okay. I thought you said there wasn't currently.
Correct. But there wasn't current, a total, a final maximum for each individual tenant. It's based on that wall area.
Okay.
And it's a little more complicated than I said, but currently, there is that 15% max if the wall area doesn't exceed 500 square feet, and then they get 75 square feet plus 5% of the wall area in excess of 500 square feet. So currently, if their wall area is in excess of 500 square feet, it could potentially get larger than a 300-square-foot sign, and we just want to make sure there's an ultimate cap on the size of the multi-tenant sign.
Okay.
Each one.
So it's a single-tenant cumulative?
It's still, there still are different regulations for wall signs and freestanding, so there's a 300-square-foot max on the wall sign. There's a lot more regulations on the property.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on these sign ordinance changes? Okay?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and approve first reading of the ordinance amendment to City Code, Chapter 11, Section 11.70 relating to sign permits, and adopting by reference City Code, Chapter 1, and Sections 2.99 and 11.99, which, among other things, contain penalty provisions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Payment of claims. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens.
Aye. Thank you. Reports of council members. Mr. Getchell, you want to take that?
Yeah. Mayor and Council, this is a follow-up to a request from council at the last meeting to provide you with an update. We call it a community services update to services being provided in our community, specifically the Somali community. So we have with us tonight a housing manager, Housing Community Services Manager, Molly Koyvamaki, who's going to provide a brief update as a follow-up to some of the questions raised at the last council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Getchell. Mayor, Council. Really happy to be here tonight to talk about the work that my division has done, presented before you many times over the years, and hopefully tonight, you'll see that we've seen some very positive trending in our immigrant population in total, but in our Somali population in particular, as they have gained more skills and participating more in our community. I want to talk first about the funded programs directly, right today, that we are funding. And I'll just say, where does the money come from? As you'll recall, we have two different pots of funding for human services programs. We have CDBG, which is the federal funding, and that comes to you usually in March of every year. We come to you and present what we will be funded. Generally, there's about a $50,000 pot of money that we can allocate towards that, and that's an annual program, so we seek RFPs every year for CDBG. The general fund is a two-year cycle, as is our budget, and that will come to you probably in November, October or November. That funding cycle starts in late spring, early summer. We do the RFPs. We get the proposals, and then we will be reviewing them. The Human Services Review Committee will review those proposals probably in about a month and prepare that, make the recommendation to Mr. Getchell, and then come forward and make those funding recommendations for the next two years. So those are the two different ones. Generally, there's about $160,000 in the general fund that we have for allocating. So those are, are the two, just to give you kind of an update on that timeline that we have for funding. So for the programs that are funded right now, the first one, the police officer liaison to the Somali community, that's out of the, out of the police department's budget, exactly, obviously, but that particular officer in that position is very valuable to the work that we do in helping to bridge gaps and helping to create understanding with the Somali families in particular, and really try to gain the trust of the parents, because a lot of what we do is to try to bring family involvement together and really aim at the parents, the trust, getting the parents to trust the programming that we do. And the Somali, the police officer liaison we have to the Somali community is, is very, very helpful, and we work very well together. Out of my division, the Somali liaison is a part-time position, part-time seasonal, I think that's how it's classified in HR, and it's about a $25,000 outlay for that. I have another slide that will show more of what that Somali liaison does, so this is very, very interesting. We also, directly this summer, supported the Y program, a Y program at Briar Hill, and this is a program that helps parents get used to enrolling their kids in park programs, and it's done on-site, because what we saw was a lot of hesitation in the summertime for immigrant families, particularly Somali, that live at Briar Hill that are not comfortable yet with understanding how to get their kids into the park programs that we have. And so we worked with the Y to say, let's start out here with a pilot project of doing the park programming on-site, and it was very successful. And hopefully, I'll have a report from you. They just wound up just a few weeks ago, and that $6,000 outlay really had the, the great return on investment as far as parents being happy. The Briar Hill apartment management was very happy, and of course, the kids had a, had a great time, because the Y does a very good job. There are other programs that we fund, and I've selected a few here that aren't just for the Somali community, but certainly a lot of the Somalis benefit from that. The early childhood family education, that's parent education, and that allows, that funding allows the parent educators to go on-site to the Preserve Barn, to Briar Hill, and, and here at our early childhood family center, too, but to work with the immigrant families on getting kids ready for school, that school readiness, and really the early parenting skills, early childhood parenting skills. Again, the fact that they can go on-site really helps increase the involvement with the parents. HomeLine, as you know, is a tenant service. That's the third one, or the second one, rather, down there. The, that's a tenant advocacy service, and they help people who are experiencing losing their, their apartment, maybe losing a voucher, or just having issues with their landlords. And so a lot of the, a lot of the folks that use that are in the Somali population. It's not only for that, but I thought it was significant enough. I don't have a number for you, but I can, I can surely get that. But our HomeLine folks tell us that a lot of the people from Eden Prairie that call that needing help are from the Somali population. And then the Y youth camp and the leadership camps are, again, are seeing more interaction with Somali students. So those are the, the three that I have up there. I'm going to go to another screen unless there's a question right now. Okay. So I mentioned on the, the last one that we have Somali liaison that we fund, a part-time program out of, out of my office. And systems navigation is really the term that you probably heard. We, we seem to be using that more and more because of technology and because of the complex nature of all of the funding and all the programs that are out there. The system navigation piece is really important for all of our staff to be able to understand how programs operate, how you access programs. What we find is that there are a lot of programs available, and there are a lot of people with need, and sometimes bringing those two together is exactly the service that we can provide, and that return on the investment can really help keep our community stable, keep our families stable. Hennepin County Court Services, or Hennepin County Services, rather, they, as you know, they do offer a lot of programs for human services, but the understanding how to access those programs can be very, very difficult. We have the service providers who have to go for training. Every year, we hold something we call navigating the waters, where we have Hennepin County come in and talk to service providers, not the clients, but they tell us the updates, because there, there may be changes in healthcare, there may be changes in all kinds of things that the county provides, and we need to keep track of those, and it, so that navigating the, the systems is very, very important, be able to help clients. We need to know what those, what those changes are. I don't know if you've ever called Hennepin County Human Services, but they have a phone tree that's pretty easy to get lost in and can be very frustrating for service providers. So you can imagine for clients who are not as skilled, it can be even more difficult to try to access, again, the really good programs. Our system navigation helps with landlord issues. Our system navigation helps with landlord issues. We have folks that, that need help understanding their responsibilities. We have folks with landlords that need help understanding their responsibilities. We work a lot with Metro HRA, especially if it's a Section eight voucher situation, to try to help folks understand and not, what the obligations are and to not, you know, the potential for losing their voucher, becoming homeless. So we work a lot in that. Employment support, we have, we have a great employment or career support out of our office, and there's a bank of three computers that we got on a grant from the foundation that years ago, that helped people come in and be able to access their email, help them upgrade their resumes, and just provide a very nice area for people to come and work on that, on their careers, again, their applications, apply for jobs and so forth. Navigating, I kind of alluded to this a little bit before when I talked about Briar Hill, but navigating the Park and Rec and the school participation programs, those can be very, very confusing to families about how do you get into these programs? What does it mean to sign up for a program? And it takes some guidance. It takes a little bit of helping to navigate. This is what it means to go to one of the Park and Rec programs. It comes all second nature to us, because we grew up in the culture and we understand and it is not, it can be very confusing as to why wouldn't you know what a basketball program is, or why wouldn't you know what the afternoon program is and how to participate? I think we're getting much better at it, but it's still something that we want people to fully use, all the amenities that we have, that the Park and Rec Department and all of our departments have worked so hard to make available. And we're just that, helping people understand how to access them, again, to build happy families and happy communities, and we're having a lot of success in that. As you know, we had a big change in healthcare and insurance systems this year. We had a lot of work with helping people understand where to access the information, what information they need before they even make the phone call or go online, and help in that regard. So a lot of times, we're the first step. Before you go online and get the help, our staff can be the first step. This last one is interesting, college financial resources. This again kind of points to maybe some trending in the positive way, because we've started to get questions from folks about how to access college financial services, which tells you that that population is moving directly into that opportunity to go to college. I think that is really a positive sign that we're getting questions about financial aid, which is for all of us, a very kind of tough system to navigate, but if you're not of the culture, it can be even more difficult. Before I go on to the next one, I want to talk about this, there's a background, I don't know how well you can see it, but our Somali liaison is in this picture, and our Famalink Resource person is also in this picture. Famalink Resource is funded through a grant from the school district, but it's housed out of our office, and it is a major crossover, because we serve the same populations from the school district and the city, and having this linkage, so Mohammed and Carolyn are really quite the tag team for providing some crossover services. And this slide in particular, this gentleman came in, and this has just happened within the last month, it's a very interesting story, it'll just take me a second to tell you, but this gentleman lives in Eden Prairie, he's got four kids, three of them are at Prairie View right now. He was working in a temporary industrial in Chanhas, nine dollars an hour, in a temporary job, you know, doing industrial work, and he was a good employee. Someone recognized that, someone within it, and suggested that he apply for full-time. And so that was good. He got his application together. He got the interview. And so he came to our office not knowing what, what kind of questions were, are they going to be asking. So Mohammed and Carolyn were able to get some of these questions about, for instance, tell us what one of your weaknesses, which is a typical question that we get in interviews. In our culture, perhaps we understand what that question is getting at, but with a lot of folks that are not of our culture, that we hear the answer being, I don't have weaknesses, because we don't want to tell our potential employer we have weaknesses. So we can, we're able to help coach folks as to what some of the questions are likely to get in these advanced interviews are going to be, help them to understand what employers might be looking for. So in this case, there were four positions open at this company, full-time benefited positions. This is very big in our world. There were ten people that were applying. These are all internal candidates. And so he was able to get the position. He was made the offer, and his pay then went to sixteen dollars an hour, which is, it's just very, very exciting for us to see. Again, that points to movement where, pardon me, when you heard me make these presentations ten years ago, a lot of what I talked about was, we need to get people learning how to drive. We need to get English, as a second language, or English language learners. We were at a more base level, and you'll recall that. Now we are talking about, I need to learn how to get a promotion. I need to help with college finance. I think it points in a very good direction, and I do think it points to the investment that this council's made over the years, to keep investing in this community, and it's showing its way, so pretty happy about that. There are some other ongoing things that we do that I just want to bring up. We support, we have the Somali mothers' meetings. So these are meetings that take place maybe every six weeks, maybe every eight, it kind of depends, but these are opportunities for the moms to come and have a topic, whether it's a school, whether it's a medical, doesn't matter what it is, but it's an opportunity to focus on just the moms, and they are able to ask questions. They don't bring their kids, which is, you know, very helpful for us, and we bring in professionals. We have, we're now in our third year of having South Lake Pediatric come in once a year and talk with the moms, and that's one of the biggest attended ones, because there's so many questions about health and about, just in its personal, it's the docs that come in from South Lake, and with some of the nurses too, but it's actually physicians that come in and give us their time. I just wanted a quick read you. We had a thank you, and this was to Mohammed Dwali from South Lake. Thank you so much for all of your hard work and connections to the Somali community to make last evening's event such a success. Thank you for including South Lake Pediatrics. We appreciate the opportunity to share information regarding immunizations. I believe this was just the first collaboration between the City of Eden Prairie, the Somali community, and South Lake Pediatrics. I look forward to working with you in the future. I was very happy to get that, because again, that was, we're now, have just recently had our third meeting with South Lake Pediatrics, and they are very appreciative of being able to reach that community. I'll continue on. We have an annual teen job fair that takes place usually in March to get employers ready to hire for the summer. That is a very big event. We do a drug awareness and connection with the police department. Officer Andy Rhodey, who is the Somali liaison, comes and does a drug presentation. He did one a few weeks ago at, in the Cambray Room and had a, had a good turnout. People have, are shy about asking questions about drugs, because they don't know enough about the drugs to ask the right questions. And if you've ever heard Andy speak, he does a real good job of coaxing it out, of getting people to ask questions that they might be a little shy to do so. We do basic conflict resolution sometimes between, again, landlords and tenants, or if there are issues just with misunderstandings, sometimes bringing that to us, we can help separate and get the facts and help, just help people be better neighbors with each other. We have special ed, kids with special ed, especially in the Somali community with autism or special ed needs. That's a very difficult thing for parents in the Somali community to talk about or to accept or to seek help for. So Mohammed has been very critical in helping to get people to understand that there are resources available, and to help gently guide people to get over the stigma, which is very large, mental health issues in the Somali community are very large. The ongoing, our international coffee with the council, we had that in the Cambray Room, that was, that was very successful. And our international fair. We met recently with Park and Rec staff to talk about, remember the old International Festival and how is that, the Human Rights and Diversity Commission keeps wanting to bring that back. But what we'd like to do first, and what we will do next week, the Human Rights and Diversity Commission will meet, and staff from Park and Rec will come and talk about what is already being done, because every weekend, there is something being done in our parks that we could incorporate some diversity into. And so they have been talking about that. The Parks and Rec people have been talking about that, talked about that. We're going to turn it over to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission and to say, you want the, you want the International Festival, we understand that, but let's look at what we already have going on, and let's let you all commissioners try to engage people to really beef up some of the existing things just as the first step. And then let's, let's look at that kind of participation, and maybe the second step will lead to a return of the International Festival. And so I'm very happy about that, because I think it is, it is again, the opportunity to bridge the two. We have all of the wonderful events going on, and we need to get the people there, and that's what my office is really charged with doing, and we're happy about it, is to get the people to the events, get the people to the resources. There you go. So, I talked a lot, didn't I?
Thank you. Are you ready for questions?
Yes, mayor.
Or comments? Councilmember Case.
So more of a statement, but maybe a little bit of a question at the end, and maybe a little bit of an explanation, but initially, I think what was behind my initial request, and this was really good, I think it laid an amazing foundation for wherever we head from here, but initially, I think what caused me to begin to think, what are we doing here in this community, is just all the news and press around the nation about terror recruitment and what's going on, and not just the Somali community, but particularly Somali community, but various immigrant communities around the country. And that led me to thinking about, how do we best inculcate our cultural values into people that are newer to our country or our community, and how have we done it in the past, and how is it different now, particularly with a particular Somali community and its needs? And I just feel like, as most of us say, or all of us up here would probably agree, that government money really should be viewed, or I hope can be viewed, as seed dollars that we could really be using to help the Somali community by incentivizing cultural acclamation. But it's also about being really practical with our current community dollars as we try to not only help the Somali community, but also help our community as a whole be a better and a safer community. So I, I think my initial concerns may be, in addition to everything you said, looking at what are we doing with junior and senior high school Somali boys and girls in terms of programs that are directly really addressing some of the cultural, you know, acclamation and Caucasian pieces? And are there programs out there currently addressing that need that we're not funding to the extent that we maybe could be, that would be getting more bang for our buck? And if there are not, how could we encourage there to be? So I was kind of just more looking and feeling around in that arena of thought, and so I don't need a report back, but maybe just continued conversation by all of us, and as we look at these few dollars really that we spend on this, how are we getting, it sounds like we are, it sounds like we're really getting a lot for them, and I'd certainly like to continue that, and are there other places and ways that we could also get even more out of the money that we are spending to help make our community a safer and better place, and at the same time, very much help the immigrant communities that move into our town as we give them that step up and then they move on and go on their way? The other piece I just spoke with Molly briefly right before this was, there's got to be data out there that really confirms where we've put our dollars. Data that shows the Somali community has really moved out of the Section eight housing now into their own apartments, and I know in many cases, there are banks that are offering special types of loans, they're not loans, because they don't charge interest, but they charge fees. And so there are Somali families moving into homes and buying them. I want, I'd like to know the numbers. How many Somali kids are going to college? I mean, I think there's some cool data out there that would show that we really have gotten a lot out of the few dollars that we've incentivized and used in the Somali community. So there's that piece out there, not to cause you to do more work, but as you gather data and maybe accumulate that and give us a report back in six months or something, but I am, I am interested just in the short run of what's going on with the junior and senior high school kind of age population in our community, particularly with the Somali immigrants, and what could we be doing more there?
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Koi Vamaki?
Thank you, Molly.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So as we conducted our HRA meeting, we set a, asked you to set a preliminary levy and budget, and we're asking the same with the overall citywide budget for 2016. As you know, we conduct a two-year budget process. We begin to compile and think about and process our 2016 and 2017 budget as early as the beginning of 2015. And the documents that are in the packet tonight are a summary of some of that information as it relates to the two-year budget process. The action tonight is to pass a preliminary resolution setting just next year's levy and budget, and as I mentioned with the HRA piece, it's a levy that you could lower by the end of the year, but you cannot raise. But the point I'm making is that there's a lot more information behind just setting a preliminary levy for next year. We're, we're in the midst of our two-year budget process, and currently, the council spent quite a bit of time this summer at workshop discussing survey results that we've had in our community and desired service levels for delivery. We looked at different department work plans as we began to assess by council direction what type of service levels are our residents expecting and should we set with our budget? Because quite frankly, a huge percent of our budget is the people that deliver the services to the community. And that's what's reflected in the document that, you know, would eventually be available when it would be approved in December. So as we work through the summer, there are several goals that we set with the budget related to maintaining service levels and in some cases, enhancing them, and that was a discussion with Public Safety and with our community center, and the addition that we've had to our community center. We also want to continue to look for efficiencies and innovation in the service delivery, so a lot of times, we could say, you know, for instance, you might see a one and a half percent increase in this particular division, but if not for these efficiencies and savings, it could have been higher. So it's not necessarily what did you cut, it's what did you save in delivering the service at the same or better level, is always a very important comment to make. So you can see in the document that we want to maintain our goals or be able to implement our goals, and also do it in a way that is of value to our residents and our taxpayers. And as we discussed at our last workshop, the proposed levy that we have in front of you tonight is a two-point-nine percent increase from the prior year. And as I said, in serving the communities around us, that is one of the lowest, if not the lowest, preliminary levies that we've seen. It equates to a budget change of three-point-nine percent. And again, I said earlier that we have many other funds besides a general fund as it relates to our budget, but this is the piece of the budget that would include, that would be tied to our property tax levy. Our general fund levy, our debt levies, our capital levies are all included in that proposed increase of two-point-nine percent. And also, it's a little bit early in the process, but we do know at this time, a little bit of the impact that that levy would have on our taxpayers, and the median valued home at Eden Prairie increased just under five percent. And this proposed budget levy would have a total change in the tax on that home that went up in value almost five percent of six dollars a year, or one-half of one percent. And in fact, you can see in the document that we're projecting a decrease in commercial taxes on a sample two-million-dollar property. We know that not every home is the median valued home, so if the value of a property stayed the same, or maybe only went up a percent or two, it might even see a decrease in its tax based on what the city's proposed levy is, because the city's rate is decreasing. So the, the rate that is applied to tax capacity is decreasing for the second consecutive year, and we see that as a positive thing in the growth in our tax base. So tonight, the request is to pass a resolution setting the preliminary levy. As we go through September and October, we are trying to receive some feedback. As we go through September and October, we are trying to receive some feedback on our budget. We're producing a series of videos, we're putting quite a bit of budget information on our website as we lead into the end of the year and a public hearing and an action that we would ask you to take at our December meeting to adopt a final budget levy. So again, it could change by the end of the year, but we take some pride and effort in completing as much as our budget as possible before we get to the fall and getting as much comment feedback as we can before that time. And we certainly can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
I'm pretty sure I know the answers to these because we've discussed them in workshops, but I think since this is a public hearing, I want to ask a couple of these quickly. Does this amount, give employees, you know, raises so that we maintain our good people and things?
Councilmember Nelson and City Council, it does. Both the 2016 and 17 budget have proposed 2.5% base wage increases, which is in line with our analysis of the market at this current time. So there is that provision. There is also health insurance, in addition to wages and benefits are a cost driver to, you know, any labor-driven business, and those dollars are covered in here as well.
That was my next question. Is also cover of things like inflations for materials, computers, energy and such? So that's all figured into this as well?
It is. So each line item in the budget is prepared and considered separately as it relates to inflation with fuel and electricity and materials. So that kind of goes back to the earlier comment that with energy, for instance, we're able, you know, to see some savings on energy due to some of our initiatives and energy efficiency, even if the increases we're seeing in energy costs might even be higher than what we're budgeting, we're gaining some efficiencies that way, but this budget does account for that.
It also covers the fiscal disparities that we have to pay into the state by state rules. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the one difference between July and August was receiving a little bit more detail on our fiscal disparities contribution, and that's exactly right, it is a contribution. I'll have more detail in December, but last December, I was able to say that the net effect of contributing into this program or pool is a 7% change in a tax bill in Eden Prairie. And again, I think the difference between the 2.7% levy increase and the 2.9% levy increase tonight, the difference there is our contribution to fiscal disparities.
And one quick comment. I very much appreciate your and the staff's efficiency and innovation that they do to help keep our budget down, and I'm glad we're maintaining our services and keeping a reasonable tax level as well. A lot of credit goes to the staff.
Thank you. Councilmember Case.
I just want to clarify, I'm not sure, Mr. Getcho, if I heard right. I thought you said the budget increase. At one point, I thought you said 3.9, but I think I heard 2.9, but on page eight, it's 2.5, I think. Is that accurate?
So the, if you look at page eight, so the total levy, 2.9, and the total, my fault, you are correct. The general fund budget increase is 3.9. The total budget increase is only 3.5. So when you factor in our debt budget and our capital levy, that total city budget change would be 3.5.
Got it. And then all the way over is 2017, which I was reading. So I get it.
Correct.
2016, 3.5, and then 2.9. Okay.
Correct. So yeah, to clarify, total levy proposal, 2.9%. Total budget change, 3.5% for '16. The document does include those numbers for '17, which is, at this current time, same levy, 2.9, a budget change of 2.5. You're correct, for 2017. That does sometimes change in the timeframe between now and the end of next year, so we'll have a year and a half to refine that number, but doing a two-year budget allows us to plan that far ahead.
And just to let people know why there's discrepancy there is that our levy only brings in about 75% of the dollars that we actually end up spending coming in from other sources.
Correct.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate you asking that question because I was going to point that out. We're being asked today to certify a property tax levy of about $34.5 million. We're being asked to accept the proposed budget, which is almost $46 million. But again, it's not that we're negative spending, we do have a balanced budget. We do get additional monies in intergovernmental aid, building permits and fees, licenses, charges for services, like if you sign up for a recreation program through our Park and Rec Department, you might incur a fee, fines and penalties, and investment income. So there's a lot of other sources for funds other than just the tax levy. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution that certifies the proposed 2016 property tax levy to be $34,668,740, 34,668,740. I taught sixth grade a while, I should have read that a little better. Sets December 1, 2015, as the meeting, which will include discussion of the budget and provide for public comment, and accepts the proposed 2016 budget of $45,877,812, and consents and approves the HRA tax levy of $200,000.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any other business to bring before the council? Hearing done, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.